Councilmember, agency member Barnwell.
Here.
Falcone.
Here.
Horton.
Here.
House.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mayor Chair Blum.
Here.
Item number one, proclamation declaring October 2007 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and End Domestic Violence Month.
Okay, Cameron. Yeah. And how are you today?
Good.
Good. October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and End Domestic Violence Month. Domestic violence is a serious violent social problem that exists in all economic segments of society, in all cultures and in all countries of the world. An estimated 211,240 new cases of female breast cancer were diagnosed, while an estimated 2,000 new cases of male breast cancer were diagnosed in 2005. That mammography is recognized as the most effective method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be felt or seen. The Sir-Optimist Workplace Campaign to End Domestic Violence and Breast Cancer Awareness are ongoing Sir-Optimist efforts to promote awareness, advocacy, and action. Sir-Optimists are in a position worldwide to educate everyone, especially women, that they have the right to feel safe and to live free from violence. Sir-Optimists in Camino Real region launched a region-wide campaign called Color Me Pink for Breast Cancer and Purple for Domestic Violence to provide information about breast cancer and services available for prevention of domestic violence. So we proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and End Domestic Violence Month with special recognition to the Sir-Optimists of Camino Real region for their various contributions to many communities, to many communities for advancement of human rights and dissemination of information. Easy for you to say, huh? There you go. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Thanks, Cameron.
Just thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. It's your honor. Item number two, proclamation declaring October 2007 as Work and Family Month.
Okay, Eileen. You know, the breast cancer and the domestic violence flags are up on State Street, and so it reminds us all. That's good. Hi, Eileen. This is Work and Family Month, too. The quality of workers' jobs and the supportiveness of their workplaces are key predictors of job productivity, job satisfaction, commitment to employers, and retention. Employees who feel they're overworked tend to feel less successful in their relationships with their spouses, children, friends, and tend to neglect themselves, feel less healthy, and feel more stressed. Anybody up there think? I just -- the three councilmembers running for reelection are a little under-stressed right now. Job flexibility allows parents to be more involved in their schools, in their children's lives, and parental involvement is associated with children's higher achievement in language and math, improved behavior, greater academic persistence, and lower dropout rates. A lack of job flexibility for working parents negatively affects children's health in ways that range from children being unable to make needed doctor's appointments to children receiving inadequate early care, leading to more severe and prolonged illnesses. Sixty percent of Santa Barbara County wage and salaried workers have immediate day-to-day family responsibilities off the job. Nearly one out of every four Americans, over 45 million Americans, provided or arranged care for a family member or a friend in the past year. That's an amazing number. Nearly all working adults are concerned about spending more time with their family. An increasing number of baby boomers are reaching retirement age in record numbers. More and more Americans are faced with the challenge of caring for an older person. So on September 5, 2003, the U.S. Senate read a resolution 210 passed unanimously, designated October as National Work and Family Month. And so we're proclaiming this month as Work and Family Month here in Santa Barbara, and we urge all employers to support a balance between work and personal life that is in the best interest of worker productivity. So thank you for being here, Eileen. You're welcome.
Of course, you assume I have something to say, right? Thank you very much. I appreciate the time and effort it took to do this. I want to thank Sarah Hannah for putting this together as well. And I just wanted to thank you on behalf of those families that are out there, the family, the firefighter who has a 10-year-old child with special needs, the city payroll clerk who has a father with Alzheimer's, the, you know, bank teller who has two children and needs childcare. It's sometimes quite a miracle that they actually show up for work, not, you know, much less be focused and productive. So I thank you for all that you have done for families and for keeping this a priority in your policymaking. Thank you.
Item number three, proclamation declaring November 2007 as American Diabetes Month.
Diabetes is a disease in which the body does not produce or properly use insulin, a hormone that's needed to convert sugar, starches, and other foods into energy required for daily life. Nearly 21 million children and adults in the United States, or 7% of the population, have the disease of diabetes. An estimated 14.6 million have been diagnosed with diabetes, and unfortunately, 6.2 million people are unaware that they have the disease. The cause of diabetes continues to be a mystery. However, both genetics and environmental factors such as obesity and lack of exercise appear to play roles. To this date, diabetes has no cure and continues to be the fifth deadliest disease in the United States. Diabetes is a chronic debilitating and costly disease and can be especially dangerous to women and their unborn children. The Partners for Youth -- wait, just a second. Let me go back. The Partners for Fit Youth, which is a wonderful collaborative in Santa Barbara County, whose mission is to improve the health of youth and their families through education, intervention, outreach, and environmental changes to prevent chronic disease and promote healthy weight. The Partners for Fit Youth, I did it this time, bilingual promotional poster campaign, which is called Eat More Fruits and Vegetables, is being placed in all the city buses in Santa Barbara, Lompoc, and Santa Maria, and I think everybody has a copy of that up there, which is very wonderful. So we proclaim November as American Diabetes Month in Santa Barbara, and we encourage all citizens to help fight the disease by making healthy lifestyle choices and providing support to those suffering from diabetes. And thank you so much for being here. There you go.
Thank you. This bus poster campaign is part of a larger media campaign to -- the previous part of it was doing a Spanish-language television spots, four spots with a local family. And the same mom and two kids are -- is featured in this poster, mom. And we'll continue to do more media spots, but aimed at Latino and low-income families, which are at highest risk for diabetes. You do have each one of them, and let's see. We hope that you'll find a place to put these somewhere in your sphere of activities, maybe even the lunchroom here in the staff room.
Good idea.
Also, I wanted to give you each of you, and I think you might have it already, one of these flyers on Partners for Fit Youth, just so that you know, the organization that's working on childhood obesity and prevention of diabetes. And this actually is countywide, working throughout the county, and you can see by the members here that it represents many health organizations, physical activity organizations, youth-serving, educational organizations, and the food bank. And we've been working on different campaigns since about, for about six years. And I want to thank you for your help in promoting the prevention and reduction of obesity, which contributes to diabetes. And I wanted to introduce Jessica St. John, who's one of the partners for Fit Youth. And she's the coordinator for Project Lean, which is under the Public Health Department. This is Julie Bifano, who's the coordinator for Partners for Fit Youth. And I'm Susan Horn, and I work for the Public Health Department also as Network for Healthy California Nutrition Program. And by the way, I'll put these flyers in the back. This is one of our partners, the Orfola Foundation, is having a big event next week, next Wednesday, which is a dinner and a film called Unfortunately: Two Angry Moms. It's a terrible title. It should probably be Two Motivated Moms or something. It's about reforming the school lunch system and have a panel of speakers afterward. Can I put those in the back?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Two Angry Moms, right. Oh, dear, that's scary.
Oh, terrible title.
Sounds like a science fiction movie. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks, Sarah. Okay, any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment? I have two speaker, or three speaker slips here. Michael Self will be followed by Karen -- sorry, Ken Locke.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to address you. Last winter in these council chambers, a specialist warned you and the community about severe water shortages that faced our city. He said even if there was no drought, that we were using water beyond our means. If we get heavy rains after these fires, tons of silt will fill our reservoir, further diminishing our water supply. You are required by our municipal code and city charter not to allow development to grow past our natural and physical resources. The state does not require housing mandates of communities that cannot sustain the recommended growth. Why have you not sought relief from these mandates? Surely, you're aware the community does not want to be modeled after a congested European city. You were elected to steward our city. I hear much from you about global warming and green building. Why do I hear nothing about water? You're promoting these massive dense buildings. If smaller is better for a living space, why isn't a smaller building better? You all live in residences with yards, yet you call this sprawl an undesirable choice for homeowners. Your actions have created many citizen advocates, I being one of them. It appears your vision for this town is out of step with Santa Barbara, with the Santa Barbara that citizens love. The city is being sued from one end to the other. I know you hear us, because I hear it on the campaign trail. You're telling us what we want to hear. However, your actions do not support that rhetoric.
Thank you. Ken Locke will be followed by Bill Batty.
Madam Mayor, though, we're not allowed to respond. I do want to invite Michael Self to join us at the next Kachuma Operations Management Board meeting, where we go over water supply issues every month. And I represent the city in those meetings, and you're welcome to attend those.
Thank you.
I'll give you the time. I'll give you the time. You can give me a call.
Thank you. Ken Locke, followed by Bill Batty.
My name is Kenneth Locke. What needs to take place here is pretty extreme in relation to how people work in the community. We have to learn to work together in relation to a common good and then develop a sense of wealth in relation to that work. Right now, the false concept is that this wealth in relation to money and how a person earns it, it's all selfish. It's not, we recognize the commonwealth of this community. There isn't any. And I mentioned to you before that I was wondering why you guys were still here after, you know, our president pretty much sold his country down the road. Let's see, on Friday, November 2, at 7:30 p.m. at the Veterans Memorial Building, will be a woman named Ann Wright and a couple other people. Ann's a retired Army Colonel, former diplomat who quit her 16-year State Department career following the invasion of Iraq in March 2003. Here's a woman who's standing up. I'm not sure if you people have lacked the understanding or what the lacking there is, but from my perspective, it's pretty funny. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Batty will be the last speaker.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council represent Family Service Agency and other nonprofits in the community, and we thank you for your support of Human Services with the CDBG funding as well as discretionary funds. Wanted to just inform you that next Tuesday, November 6, the County Board of Supervisors is going to make a decision about whether to expand county human service funding to the nonprofits that provide human services in Santa Barbara County. We've advocated, unfortunately, as of July 1, when they approved the new county budget, they did not approve a cost-of-living adjustment nor an expansion funding recommendation that came from the County Human Service Commission. The nonprofits have not received a COLA in six years, and of course, you know, because you operate city government, costs are increased. You need to, here we are, Work and Family Month, compensate employees fairly. So if you would consider contacting your colleagues on the County Board of Supervisors, we need a majority vote to increase, to create a cost-of-living adjustment and expansion funding. Anticipated more than 26,000 people will be served countywide by the human service agencies funded through the human service funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Batty. Okay, consent calendar. Anybody want to take something off? I know Lori has -- go ahead and read. You need to read by title only.
Item number five, adoption of the Unscheduled Collection Permit Ordinance, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. In ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, adding Chapter 7.18 Unscheduled Collection to Title 7 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code pertaining to permit requirements for certain unscheduled solid waste collection businesses.
Okay. Anybody want to take anything off? Then can I have a motion?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a report from the ordinance committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We met today at noon, and we discussed and then sent to council, recommend the adoption by council of changes to both the flyer code and the building codes, bringing them up to consistency with state law and up to current status. So you'll see that, both of those, very soon.
Okay. Thank you. Item 13.
Item number 13, West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project Design Contract.
Okay, West Beach. Mr. Bossy?
Not yet. I will in two seconds. There it is. Yep. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Agency Board Members. My name is Brian Bossy, and I'm the redevelopment supervisor with the city's redevelopment agency. We're here today to give you an update on the West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project and also a new design agreement proposal for the West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project. And what I'd like to do is start with, just review a little bit, go over the project goals with you briefly, touch on some recent background of the project, move into where we are in the project and where we plan on going. And with that, I'll start off. Overarching project goals. When this first came about, and it still remains today, the main project goal with this is to improve the pedestrian linkage between Sternsworf and the harbor. And we plan on doing that by improving the Cabrillo Boulevard pedestrian circulation and safety, as well as providing additional areas of interest on West Beach, as well as creating a greater sense of place for sea landing. The idea behind all those is to pull people down towards the waterfront area and into our working harbor. We feel that these goals, these components, would add a certain synergy to the area that would, could possibly end up in additional public and/or private development and improvements in the future. As far as project background, it does start a little bit earlier than this, but in March of 2006, the agency staff and the conceptual motion company brought to you a West Beach conceptual study. And what that was, was it took a look at all the city's planning documents, the general plan, the pedestrian master plan, the circulation element, the waterfront area transportation plan, the local coastal plan, and everything else we could possibly get our hands on to look at what were the ideas with this part of our city. What did people and those plans want to see down in these areas? So consequently, what happened is those were all summarized and broken out into four main areas where capital assistance could be, would be most needed and best used with the dollar. And I'll get into those four components in a little bit. So consequently, at that March '06 meeting, the agency board reviewed that plan and approved the concept behind how we would like to break that project into phases. Shortly thereafter, in May of '06, the redevelopment agency and conceptual motion company entered into a design agreement, which was to develop the preliminary and final designs for Phase 1 of the project, as well as develop a conceptual study for Phase 2 of the project. From there, and I should also say, even prior to July of '06, and in the putting together the conceptual study, our consultant and staff took a great deal of time and effort to make sure we went out and did a great deal of public outreach. We continue to do that and have been doing that from the start. This is a list of a number of the folks that we have been out to visit, either in group meetings, or quite often, the conceptual motion company went out and met with these people just by themselves, with individual groups as they requested. So a significant amount of public research was conducted and continues to be conducted in this process. What came out of that was a conceptual design. We broke it down into a Phase 1 and Phase 2 component. Phase 1 is, here on your screen, focused on Cabrillo Boulevard pedestrian crossings. And let me see if I can get this guy to work. We've got crossings here at Chapala Ambassador Park, Bath Street, as well as an improved crossing here at Castillo Street. We have repairs to the existing sidewalk from Sternsworf all the way to Sea Landing. One of the ideas put out was the idea of turf between the beachway and the seawall here, as well as viewing plazas and intuitive signage components that would essentially intercept the existing beachway at these various intersections, as well as, I should say, sea landing improvements coming down to sea landing here. Now Phase 2 took into account the more western half of this particular project, which focused on the waterfront and harbor area, primarily the waterfront parking lot. And what the idea was, here's the time with the sea landing enhancements, the proposed sea landing enhancements, provide a realigned bike path and enhance pedestrian connections, a new waterfront parking lot configuration, as well as new lighting along this new path, and signage, as well as flag poles that would start here and actually end up carrying themselves out to the breakwater, if you recall, the flag's out on the breakwater. So with that in hand, we hit the road. We went out, reviewed with city staff, we continue to review with city staff to this day. We went to the Parks and Recreation Commission in March of this year. We had a very well-attended public meeting at the Maritime Museum that a number of you folks attended, was much more than we could ask for. It was great attendance, great comments. And then in May of this year, we were at the Harbor Commission. And throughout all these meetings, wonderful comments, great ideas, and these are the people that this proposed project would impact the most. So we took all this into account, and what we did was we focused on the main areas of the public's concern. The two main areas were the placeta and beachway interaction. Those were the viewing nodes that stuck out on the beach and how those interacted with pedestrians and cyclists, bicyclists. The other main area of concern was in and around the waterfront parking lot area. It's a working harbor. We obviously don't want, we want to improve it. We don't want to do anything but improvement, but there are a lot of concerns with moving boats, trailers, and things around the parking lot. So what we did was worked, the conceptual motion company and city staff went back and reassessed the various project elements and components, and in order to address those concerns, consequently, as a part of that, Phase 2, which again was the parking lot area, actually caught up with Phase 1. There were more changes that needed to take place with Phase 1 than Phase 2. So what came out of that was an integrated project approach. Instead of having a Phase 2 and a Phase 1, they were at the same place in the development process, so we combined them. By doing that, the idea is to facilitate the development process and more efficiently apply our resources, both human and funding resources. And if you'll notice, if I can get this working again, we have pulled what were the viewing plazas that were out on the sand back onto the sidewalk. We have a very wide sidewalk there, very underutilized. So what we've done is pull that back on each of these intersections. We have also, if you notice, the turf strip is no longer there. That's primarily, was removed from the project at this point because of maintenance and operational concerns from the Parks Department, as well as sustainability issues associated with turf on a beach area. And I'll get into a little bit more detail on one of those intersections. Here is a common intersection. This is the Chapala Street intersection, and you can see how we pulled everything back onto the existing sidewalk. Phase 2, what was Phase 2, the waterfront parking lot area, what we've done is minimized those changes and basically enhanced, provided focused enhancements on the existing pathways. So this is the existing pathway. We plan on improving some of the landscaping as well as lighting. You'll see the same light, sorry, flag configuration that would again take you out to the breakwater. We've also added this enhanced concrete as a wayfinding mechanism to get out to the waterfront, as well as, it's a little bit covered here, there is enhanced pavement from the sea landing across the boat launch area. So with that revised design in hand, we hit the road again. In June of this year, we went to the Harbor Commission and had favorable comments. In June of this year, we also submitted for our DART review, and we went before the Historic Landmarks Commission in July of this year and had favorable comments there as well. Also in July of this year, staff sent you a memo regarding the integration of the project and the idea behind that, as well as a quick status report on where we're at, and told you we'd be back. And here we are today, October of '07, before you with the new design proposal. That design proposal is to basically update the design. We want the design agreement to more accurately reflect this new design that we're moving forward with. As far as our estimated project schedule, we're here before you today. In next month, November of '07, we plan on, hope to, complete our DART review. We are tentatively scheduled for the Planning Commission in January of '08. We'll continue to refine the design and work through the design process and hope to have that wrapped up towards the end of spring and go out to bid in the summer of '08 with construction scheduled to begin in the fall of '08 and wrap up as soon thereafter as we can. That completes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you do have.
Okay. We have one request to speak. Shall we go ahead with that? Okay. We have Dave Cosmo.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. That was an impressive presentation, and my name is Dave Cosmo. I'm the president of Santa Barbara Swim Club. We primarily swim at Los Banyos Pool. Our organization considers ourselves stewards of swimming. We're also mostly parents of swimmers and other things, and swimmers ourselves, but Santa Barbara has a long, rich aquatic tradition, and we have things in the city like night moves, Saman and Otico, Whole Water Week, things like that. And we have champions at all kinds of levels, high school, college, we have Olympic champions, we have an Olympic hopeful, Mark Warkington. And the context of how this ties in with the West Beach redevelopment is that we support the improvements to West Beach, and we'd like to respectfully submit a concept for a change to Los Banyos. And this seems like an appropriate time before any construction and so forth goes on there. It sort of ties in with what would have been considered, I think, Phase 2 before sort of the parking lot and the pool area. I do have slides. I didn't really bring a computer. I didn't realize any of that. I have a couple of photos. If I could just pass those, maybe.
Sure.
To either end. Essentially.
Brian, maybe we can put on just a map of the area. I know we had a couple different ones.
Yeah, the one where you had the waiting pool in Los Banyos.
Yeah, the signature. There it is. That's good. That's perfect. Thanks.
So our idea is, in general, one, two. So our idea is, in general.
Oops, you're gonna need the microphone, so you just stay here and just.
Okay. Sorry. So in, general idea is to, to take the pool that looks like Mickey Mouse and move it behind the L into the parking lot at the.
Down toward the bottom there.
Yeah, that end there, right. And then our, our design also would include another 50-meter tank that's basically right next to the current pool and would not extend further than the current bike path. And that would open up the whole area there for parking and the boat launch and everything. And you can see in the picture there what it looks like. The waiting pool as it is now, in our idea, would be converted into a, a community pool with splash pool and all kinds of activities. You might be familiar with Ventura has pools, a pool like that. And so we understand that this is, it would require collaborative effort from many groups. We think that there's ability to raise a significant amount of the cost for the project from, you know, from outside of the city. And we're just sort of at the stage where we want to explore it, and it doesn't make sense to explore it if it's not out there and known about. And so that's why we're here. We respectfully just put forward this idea, and would like to know if there's any possibility for Los Banios to be reconfigured and updated. And would the city be willing to do this if the money could be raised outside? And then we respectfully request some guidance going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that to us.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having me.
Okay. We don't have any other speakers, so let's go to the council. Where are my lights here? Ms. Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
That is an interesting idea. I've heard of before today. I know that it's been an idea that has been talked about to some extent. It does strike me, just me personally, I won't speak for anybody else, that that is a project of some weight and scale all on its own. And I know that this idea of trying to connect the harbor with Sterns Wharf is something I've been talking about for many years now. And to see it on the brink of happening is so exciting that I, I really would be sad if, if something were to delay it at this point, although you bring up some very interesting concepts about Los Banios, which is an aging facility that we do need to turn our attention to. I don't know that, that stalling this project for that very large, complicated conversation is, is the right thing to do, but certainly to continue the conversation about how to improve Los Banios, I'm very interested in and would like to talk to you more about it. But as far as this is concerned, I'm just tickled pink about, you know, going forward with this. I understand why the turf is gone for a whole myriad of reasons, but I'm, I'm concerned, and the designs are beautiful, they're just beautiful, but the spaces between the, the viewing stations, I'm wondering if there isn't, and I understand the park maintenance and, and all of that, you don't have enough to do, Santos, I know, but if, if it could be made, I don't know. Could, is there some color we could put in there? Is there some, something more than just the, I guess they're pine, palm trees? Little fern palms or some sort of a palm thing? Brian? I don't know.
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member Falcone, those, those are good suggestions. And I think as we, again, this is at the very conceptual level. We have to go through the, really the entire design review process from this point, and issues like that are, are going to need to be addressed, and we will address them. One thing to consider, in addition to the maintenance, or I should say accompanying the maintenance issue, is the water, watering issue. And we need to do some research as to where exactly water lines exist in this area. It's a beach, so we're not really sure if there's a, an easily accessible line to help with irrigation.
There's an eight-inch sewer line that runs right under that street, so there's probably a water line near it too, so.
Yeah, that's something we have to look at. Another idea that is, is going to be looked at is also the idea of benches in that, those areas between the, what we're calling placetas at the various intersections. So we will be looking into that as part of the design review process, again, at the early stages, and we'll.
My point is that the connectivity is the point. It's the fundamental point of this project, and to, to lose that would be a shame and not accomplish the goal that we're trying to achieve. And so, you know, some, something between them besides just a few plants and maybe some color, or a statue or two along the way or something. Benches are good, but you know there are obvious issues with benches, but, and I thought that there was going to be some sort of a respite opportunity in the placetas, but I, I'm not clear, I don't see them in the drawings, but that doesn't mean they're not over there in Steve's head.
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member Falcone, in regards to the placetas, in the one on the screen in your upper left, the Castillo, we will maintain that the existing, I can't get this to work, above Mickey Mouse there.
Above Mickey Mouse, there you go.
Yeah, thank you. There are a number of picnic tables at families and other sewers. Those, those will be retained. That's the idea right now. And as for the other placetas, again, we have a, a low-cut wall there, the sea wall that a lot of people do use for seating opportunities. Again, we will look at benches, but as you said, it's one of those things we have to look at very closely, and we'd like to get the input, you know, continue the dialogue we've had with the public and merchants in the area to, to further that discussion.
I'm very excited that all these people are participating in this, in this conversation. Well, my only disappointment is that it can't happen faster, so, but I do want to continue the conversation with the pool. Thank you so much for getting this really off the ground and, and making it real and not just, we're talking about it still. Thanks.
Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bossi, in the, in these images, I'm not seeing the, the pedestrian amenities, the, the bulboutts at the crosswalks. Is that just another, is this just an earlier drawing or something?
No.
Oh, I see. Yes, they do.
There we go.
Okay, under the trees there.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member House, they're a little bit hard to see, but you'll see the bulboutts starts right here and comes out, and then tails back in here as all, again, on this corner and the other corners.
The ADA ramps and all.
Yeah.
Very nice. And we don't, do we know what the feature will be in the, in the little placetas there? Are they, are they water features or, or little statues? What do you think there is going to be there?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member House, this drawing is a, a little bit dated. This, the original idea here was to put a, some sort of plant to house some permanent piece of art. Some of the discussions we've had as of late, we're working on the art component and how exactly to carry that through, but what, a number of ideas have come through, including one of them where, well, first, there are some concerns with having this right in the middle, pedestrian flow and safety issues. So the idea is to, to move it out of the middle so you can continue that pedestrian flow through there. But one of the ideas that's come through is something similar to State Street, where it would be actually built into the ground, so there could be possibly a rotating art exhibit. We are, that's one idea. There are a number of ideas that we need to really iron out, and we are working with Ginny Brush and her staff, and we have a number of discussions about that process. So it's in the, the early stages, as is the design, but it's something that we're, we're moving forward with, and we do recognize this is an important part of each of these placetas, as well as the project as a whole.
So I think it answered my next question, which was, what's the process for determining whatever the art element is? And by the way, I hope we do have something that's, an art piece or another in each of these, and that it has that kind of added benefit. But what, the process, the Arts Commission and whom else? What else? I guess this has to go through all the reviews now, from here on out, right?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member House, yes, we, we have a lot of reviews to go through, but we will be working closely with the Arts Commission, Visual Art in Public Places, and the other assorted groups, team effort to, to make this work and, and really enhance these placetas with some type of art component or components.
It doesn't appear that there's any repair or enhancements needed for the actual multipurpose path in this plan. Am I correct in that, that all these, these improvements, except for perhaps right there where there might be a decorative element in the, inlaid into it or something?
That, that's correct.
Okay. What about lighting? Is there, are there any plans to be enhancing lighting in this area, or has that been studied?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member House, there is existing lighting on Cabrillo Boulevard. It's the historically looking posts, which don't obviously put off as much light as does your standard street cobra head, I believe is what they're called, but there is existing lighting along Cabrillo Boulevard. At this point, we don't plan on changing that, but what we do plan on doing is enhancing, or actually adding lighting along this pedestrian path. Right now, there is no lighting. You get some lighting from, from various areas along here, but what we'd like to do is incorporate that into the actual pathway along with our flag.
Good, good, because it is really dark in that area at night, and if we really expect people to be walking from the restaurants back over to the wharf. Okay, very good. And then last thing has to do with, well, I, I do want to say, I'm, I, it would be interesting to get into this conversation about the, about the Los Banios, and I see it as a separate thing from what we're dealing with today, so that'll be interesting to talk about. Another thing that is separate from what we're talking about today, but I want to kind of keep the fires under it, is the possibility of, of the outrigger house and the canoe house for the tomal, for the schumash. And we've, they've been involved in, in this process since the, near the beginning and do have an interest, and I know that the idea of putting a, a park in the corner there might have, might be problematic for the Coastal Commission, but the idea of having a place to shelter the canoe and the outriggers sounds pretty interesting to me, and I'd really like to see us move forward with the study of that. So what's the process for that?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member House, that's one thing I should have touched on in my presentation, is possibility of future phases. Obviously, right now, we're, we're very consumed with this current concept. We'd like to get that through and get that up and running and get those, get those improvements done. As you know, costs never seem to go down over time, so we'd really like to get this through, run through the design review boards and make this project happen. As for future phases, looking back at the conceptual study that was done by the conceptual motion company and presented to you in March of 2006, they identified four areas that could use some capital assistance. They were West Beach, the Sterns Wharf area, Harbor Way slash the harbor, and Sea Landing. And so what we've done with this existing design is, if I can run through, really quick summarize it, we're taking into account, I'm going to run through the components, West Beach, okay? What we have here are the various crosswalk improvements in the West Beach area, but again, primarily land side of, of the, of Cabrillo Boulevard. By land side, I mean, here's the sand, and I'm making the beachway the land. I know that's not accurate, but just for the purposes of our discussion here. All right, so there we go. Now that I thoroughly confused you, let me move on. As for Sea Landing, here's what we're doing, you know, we've got some landscape and various improvements along the Sealand area, so we're touching there. As for the waterfront area, we're working within the parking lot and the existing pathways to make that happen. So the areas that that doesn't touch on, obviously, are West Beach, actually the sand portion of West Beach, as well as Harbor Way, and also, I shouldn't, I shouldn't forget the Sterns Wharf, the entrance to Sterns Wharf. So there are three areas that were ident, three other areas that were identified in that study that could use some capital assistance, and we would be more than happy to hear what you have to say about that and where you'd like to direct us to move our resources. Again, it doesn't have to necessarily wait till we're completed with this, but obviously we're, we're moving forward this, and this will be our primary focus, but we can always get ideas and processes up and running in the interim.
Well, nothing I'm saying intends to hold this up, because I'm fully supportive. I, I do want to say from a historical and from a cultural perspective, having the, the tomal presence on the beach right there, where, you know, the, right near where one of the very largest schumash towns was, you know, and villages in the past, and the outriggers who have been there on the beach forever and ever, and we really appreciate them. It'd be really great to work hand in hand with them if we can for the next phases. That's all from me. Thank you very much, Madam.
Okay. Mr. Barronwell.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I, I'm like Ms. Falcone, I'm very looking forward to this a lot, because we've been working on it a long time, and now it's coming to fruition, and I appreciate everything the staff is doing. I'm, I'm a little saddened that we couldn't get the shovel on the ground a couple, three weeks ago when it, we, we had originally intended to start, but I understand we have to go through the Santa Barbara process, and so that means we're not going to get it done until next year, but I'm certainly going to be watching closely to make sure we do get it done next year. And to go back to what Mr. House said a moment ago, my old Planning Commission buddy, the, the cruise ships unload here, and there's a whole security TSA problem now. And UCSB has got their boats down in here, and there's a federal marine sanctuary, a couple of boats here. There's a request to put in, and you may remember this, Mr. House, there was a request a while ago to put in another restaurant here. And from my perspective, and Ms. Falcone and I, and I believe Mr. Horton have been looking at this for a while with our interest associated with the waterfront, and to my own take, we could draw a ring right around this and say that we need a master plan for that whole area right there, to, to deal with all these, because it's only going to get worse until we really face it. If you look at it now, it's basically like an old-timey sidewalk that people have just been adding stuff onto, and it, it's just not right. And you're correct, I think the seashells and the tomals and the whole thing. So I don't know how everybody on the council feels, but I would like to get to some resolution regarding these things before this meeting is over. At least have direct staff to come back and give us some timelines and what these things will consist of, et cetera. My own thoughts on it are that it is, you know, we're getting to the sunset of the RDA money, and this is in the RDA area, and we've done so much for the downtown. And now, thank God, we're doing some RDA money for the waterfront. But as everyone can see, the minute you start doling this up here, then you start running into the clunky stuff from the old days that also needs to be developed up. And I, I want to put some emphasis on the Los Banios Pool. I also agree with Ms. Falcone that that's a whole separate thing. It's a fairly big deal. However, like her, I, I want to get into that. I want to wade into that, pun intended, because for a variety of reasons that weren't mentioned by the presentation, but that is heavily used by the community. That is, you know, that's a, a park site, it's a recreational site, it's one of the places that our elderly community uses quite heavily. I don't know if everybody knows it, but it's also the site that the City College uses. They don't have a pool. And when you begin to connect all the dots associated with the potential users of that pool, I think, for me at least, it, it may be another good target for some of our RDA money. Now, we're running out of RDA and I can't, you know, we wouldn't want to promise them, you know, 10 million bucks to redo the pool, but there may be a couple of million dollars in RDA seed money that we may be able to find in the next few years. So I would, I would, out of today's discussion, if, if there is agreement in the council, I'd like to come back with some idea of how can we look at that. I know that the, the Los Banios, then Swim Club, et cetera, are ready to do some fundraising. And if we have a couple million, plus or minus, from RDA money, then I, I think maybe we can get to where we need to go. As, as Mr. Horton has correctly pointed out on other occasions, the pool is now leaking, and it, it's in trouble. So, and I don't want to slow up our current project, and I don't think anything that we're doing over here couldn't just be slightly amended if, you know, if we did some permanent stuff there. But this is another one of these things, and Mr. House correctly named it a couple of, couple of meetings ago, where regarding Mission Creek, we need projects with beginning, middles, and ends, so that we can look at them and work toward the goal. My model for that is John Kennedy, want to get to the moon by the end of the decade. If you don't put time limits on those kinds of things, you kind of wallow around and you work on it. So as Ms. Falcone so correctly said, this is a big project. I think it's worthy of us turning our attention to it, not slowing this down in any way, but looking at that, and then also beginning to discuss in a master plan way, what do we need to do here to make all that work? But I, my, a strong round of applause to getting this far. I want to thank Conceptual Motion and Mr. Yates, who seems like years ago now, started showing us his vision for this waterfront down here, which I think is a really good one, and I look forward to implementing it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. Water, water everywhere. The pool issue, I thi, Mr. Armstrong, I, this is, that's on the list of the capital improvements, and funded or unfunded or wherever it is in the capital, this, the five-year and six-year plan that we've looked at earlier this year, correct?
There is, in that six-year plan, there's an aquatic center, undefined in there, and then.
And it could be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's also, I believe in the next year, we're going to be doing some repairs on just my, some repairs on the leaking issue at the pool. That's already scheduled. on, just some repairs on the leaking issue at the pool. That's already scheduled, although I think the funding's short.
I think all that's been said up to now, I mean, there's some good points about if that is in our wish list into the future, and we're looking at a number of capital improvements throughout the city, especially in our Parks and Recreation Department, and if there is interest within the community to help fundraise, to put this together through the Park Foundation, or however else it may work, that might be, certainly help us move that towards the top of the priority list. And I don't need to repeat everything that's been said, but I think that it's a prime area to look at, and I don't see why we would have a separate aquatic center if this one, A, needs fixing, and B, is a good location for it anyway, and see people know that it's already there in that location. So, I do, so I think that's certainly something to look into. I do have a question. If we can go back to the slide that highlighted that area, the most western part of the, yeah. So, right, where'd it go? Right here, are we assuming then people are going to walk along here, and it's just not colored in there, or, because it sort of just stops, this little colored concrete area, because that looks like that's parking right in this area. I know, I know, but in terms of the connectivity piece, you got people walking along here, and they go along, and you can connect over here, and then you have this over here, and it goes over, and in terms of just the color area, it just sort of stops. So I just wanted to be clear about how people get from there over there, and they just sort of walk along. I mean, is there any other enhancements that are going to occur, or is that just?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member Schneider, you're correct. The enhanced paving, it's in each of the placidas, so that is to design them up, that carries itself through. It also, as you state, comes down here to Sea Landing and further out, and it comes across here, which is the boat launch area.
Right.
People already come across here, and the idea is just to make that a little more formal for them.
Okay.
And then, yes, it leads right into this sidewalk, which is in pretty decent shape, if I'm not mistaken.
So we're not making any particular changes to that area, it doesn't need it, but in terms of letting people know which way to go?
Right, it pulls them over there, and then you've got the store and the other, I think-
Just that, the way-
The store, yeah.
Yeah, there'll be signage, and, okay.
Yes.
Right. It just looked like a dead end right there, and I know that's not what you meant, so. And also, just so everyone else knows, I, the last City Arts Advisory Committee, the Visual Arts and Public Places Committee, met and reviewed this again, and I think they brought up a good point about the art element, two things. One is, there should be some form of art element, and as a destination place, as a way to, you know, bring color into the area, for all those reasons. They did have, I think, a legitimate concern about a permanent sculpture or something, A, in terms of figuring out exactly what's going to stay there forever in that process, but also, just in the bigger idea of, there are a lot of art elements throughout the city, that, yes, we have the capital funds to initially put up, but really no ongoing maintenance and operations on any of our, and we think of the chromatic gates, the rainbow gates by the Doubletree, or the sail flags that are actually down in Chase Palm Park because they were ripped, and, you know, so, and those are just two very small examples. So, the idea of having something set up to have rotating art exhibits that you could fundraise, and, or maybe have some temporary exhibits here and there that might keep things more interesting over time for residents, but then not have that ongoing maintenance cost concern is something that I think, that was a good point coming from them. It also just led into a whole bigger piece about what are we doing on our, with our permanent art pieces throughout the city in terms of maintaining them and keeping them beautiful. So, I just want to forward that in terms of their thought process, but they didn't have any particular absolutes, yes or no, one way or another, except to say, yes, we need some form of art component on West Beach, which I would agree with. So, I'm excited to see this happen, and part of the timeline I see between now and construction, we don't want to be construction, doing any construction during the summer months, and so I can understand, that's a good time, I guess, to go through reviews and approvals, but as soon as we're off season, I hope we can move this forward, and I know you think the same way. So, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
I guess, first of all, a question to the representatives in the Swim Club. Your concern is that this area right here by the Mickey Mouse thing, if we do that right there, that would be in direct, that section right there is in direct conflict with your plans.
No, it's the one under, under the pool, right there.
Right there.
Whoops, right there, yeah. Whoever has the red light is correct.
I got that right now.
Is that you?
That's me.
It's just kind of coming out of nowhere. Yes, let me turn on that microphone, there.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Williams. Concern would not be, the word I would use, in other words, I would just, it was an efficiency, I would not want to slow down the current plans in any way, just putting it out there while we're on the conversation of West Beach redevelopment, that we have this idea. And so, no, I wouldn't characterize that as a concern.
Meaning, we could complete all of this, and it would not change your design? Because it looks to me like part of the, the, part of the next pool would be through here.
Right, either way you're going to go over, you know, the bike path would go around, would have to move. And so I don't think I would, in terms of the overall scope of what the new project would be, that doesn't seem very significant, so it wouldn't be a concern.
Okay. Do you guys have any concern about that?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member Williams, if you recall the original concept, it really, it was a completely realigned bike path, and part, the main reason for that was, we knew of the idea of possible expansion at Los Baños. What that did, as we went through, that created a number of issues with parking, that we figured, we didn't know if the pool was going to come forward. I know they've got some mechanisms in place, they want to start fundraising, but it was out there far enough that we decided, let's scale this back. And what this does is it creates some, the various enhancements, but really at, this isn't, there we go, but really at, they're significant, but in a sense, cost-wise, they're minor. I mean, it's just replacing the existing sidewalk with an enhanced paving material. The bike way stays the same, so if, in fact, a pool does come along in the future-
It wouldn't be like we wasted a lot of money.
It's not a major contribution that is a capital waste, exactly.
I understand, now, thank you, thank you. You know, I want to say that, first of all, I do support the idea of making Los Baños more utilized, and I do support the connectivity changes that you're proposing today. I think that it's important to indicate that the proposal, at least as I saw it a little ways back, was not suggesting that we use RDA funds, was essentially suggesting that they fundraise themselves. The only sort of long-term issue that I identified that I really thought needed to be addressed was the ongoing costs of the facility, that if you, this area, for instance, you know, if we're using more, more energy, or, that would have to be addressed, because that not only would be a sustainability issue for the city, but also be an ongoing cost issue for the city, because, as I understand it, unless we updated our energy system, we would be using a lot more energy at that, at the facility. The, the other area down where the boats offload at the, at the end of Sea Landing, I see that as a concern. I see a lot of these things as a concern, but what I don't want to actually, I would, I would urge restraint on the council. I think we have to be worried about our eyes getting bigger than our pocketbooks, you know, that, that we, we shouldn't be, be right now charging ahead with additional commitments unless we're looking at all the RDA questions that we might have, you know, including other recreational facilities, including, you know, the MTD project, you know, and, and multiple other projects that we're looking at before we spend those monies. That's how we've done it before, that's how we should be doing it as a process, and, and that's what I would, I would advocate for, that we hold off on doing any more commitments beyond this until we have a chance to look at all the projects that we're doing. I also kind of feel like, because I complain to Brian every time he's in a finance committee meeting, is, is, you know, I go, you know, which projects have moved forward? What have we done? And it's an ongoing frustration, because I feel a little bit like we keep on pulling them in different directions, which, in my mind, means that a lot of projects sit around for many, many years, and I'd like to get done with some of our projects before we embrace a whole lot of additional ones. So I'm going to obviously support this today, but I feel like we, before adding more things onto it, we need to get done with some of these projects and look at holistically what we want to prioritize for the rest of the RDA funds.
Okay, Mr. Horton?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm very glad that we're here with this, on something I've been hoping for, for a long time, and I am supportive of the direction. I do think that the Los Baños idea, which came forward just today, is a little bit like the elephant in the living room on this, because it sits right in the middle of this whole project, and certainly, those of us that have been pushing for the west side here wanted to go ahead. On the other hand, if we totally delay or don't look at the Los Baños, it's, I think it's a problem, because that pool services a very large number of folks in town, and a lot of different communities that we don't service in other areas of our Parks and Rec Department, I think in the City College in particular, and possibly it could even have a broader use. So I think maybe a parallel approach on the Los Baños thing, so that we don't completely ignore it as we proceed with this, and I think the admonition that was given out by Brian is fine with me, that we can make this both work. But it may be inconvenient to you guys to not, that you don't want to work on this, but I think we have to to some extent, because it's such a significant part of that whole area. And I did want to bring us back to reflect on some of the reasons why this whole project is in front of us right now, because I think we've forgotten about it a little bit. And one of the primary reasons why we're talking about this now deals with commerce in that area, and it came up because of meetings that, I happened to be on the committee at the time, Brian is on it now. And there's, there is a tendency for the tourists to come to a certain level and then stop, and yet, there's a great deal of important activity on the other side of the harbor. And when we brought this up in an RDA meeting, I think, maybe back in 2000, a long time ago, 2003, 2002, something like that, that was one of the drivers, was attempting to get people to keep walking and see what else the area has to, to benefit them. And so I think that's something I wanted to state again today. Another thing that's of concern to me is transportation. I only see the rail system being more important in terms of folks visiting from the Los Angeles area and San Diego, and that's, that terminal is right, is right there. And I think that, in addition to that, the MTD bus service, the shuttles that we have down there, and in our new plans for that area, we also have some automobile parking, and, and so transportation is a, is a second leg of this thing for me. And then, the other leg for me is a focus on, on that particular community in town, on the use by families and children and youth. And if I look at the following items, you'll see what I mean. I'm looking at the zoo, the playfields, the skateboard park, Los Baños, the Sea Center, the Maritime Museum, and we've been talking about a possible children's museum down there. Well, that, that makes that area a focus for families, youth, and children. That needs to be a significant part of our planning process in the community, and so that's why it is, it is so important, and it's, it actually has a bigger and greater importance than we might even think. For the future, I'm looking at, well past my own term up here, but as it gets more and more difficult for people to drive by automobile, the use of by, by train, and even by airplane, you bring people to town, and then what do they do, and where do they wind up? They're going to wind up in this location a lot. And so I think that as we continue planning, we need to take all that into consideration. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, and I'm very glad to see this happening too. I really like the, I think it's evolved in a wonderful way. I really like the new kind of look at, of the, what are you calling, placidas, I guess, the little areas there, and I like the enhanced, the pavement sort of thing. So, I just, and I understand what Mr. Bossi said about not really changing too much, we're still going down there, and so we're okay, because when the Los Baños pool project does come before us, we're going to have to move that whole bike path area and that. So that makes sense to me, that we just kind of enhance it a little bit, but it's, we will be able to change it later on. So, and I'm excited about the idea of a new, a new pool at some point, getting a second pool. What I want is for families to be able to have some just fun time at the pool, and right now, we have hardly any of that, and we all know that. So, that will be great, if possible. So I'm, I'm excited about this too, and we'll look forward to seeing the plans in a few months. So, Mr. House, do you have something else?
Yes, I do. First of all, Mr. Barnwell had asked, and others had responded, I just want to say, I think that the, the idea of really putting a planning hat on that, those areas, and just as you're describing, is really important, and I, but that was just, I wanted to follow up on that, and I also wanted to move-
Okay.
-that we authorize the Deputy Director to execute a $310,000, $380 professional design services contract with Conceptual Motion.
Second.
Okay. He's figured out how to get in there first with the motion, how would you?
I'm getting my feet under me.
You're really good with that now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'd like to also just say-
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Falcone.
I'd like to echo what Mr. House said to Mr. Barnwell. I think that putting on a planning hat and looking at Sea Landing, which is just sort of an ad hoc, sort of a mishmash of a lot of things out there, I've also had meetings with the, with the outrigger canoe people and the Sea Center and the, all the, all the various activities that they have. We need to really get to that, and I really, I want to second what Mr. Barnwell, or third, or fourth, or wherever we are at this point, and also the pool, but the pool's going to, that's, that's a long-term project, that's a big, big odilo. So, but I think we're all, we're all excited about it. So, yeah, we need to, and I guess, I guess Harbor Way will have to wait, much to Mr. Bridley's delight. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second? You want-
I just had-
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Barnwell.
It kind of relates to the motion, the motion was very specific, but the conversation was not. So, acknowledging that, may I ask Madam Mayor of staff, you seem to be getting some strong sense from the council that we think some other studies need to happen, the Sea Landing one, and probably the one associated, not probably, the one associated with the pool. So could I ask the question of how you see this unfolding from our staff's perspective, and to go back to the funding, and I agree with what Mr. Williams said, RDA money, we don't allocate RDA money up here for projects, nor am I even suggesting that. It's another discussion. But the, the Los Baños pool may be a target at some later date when we discuss those things. How can we begin to make these two projects gel, the pool project and the, and the Sea Landing?
Hmm.
I want to kind of hold your feet to the fire to talk about that directly.
Sure, Madam Mayor, just the Board Member Barnwell. What we can do is formulate more of a defined process for you and come back for your consideration. We have had some initial discussions as to different ideas and discussions with the community as well. So we do have some ideas that we're floating around for a defined process. As you know, we're, we're, you're holding our feet to the fire, and my feet are in the fire at this point, and so what we'd like to do is really move on the existing project, get that underway.
Okay.
And noting that, that completion, or the start of it, I should say, is the fall of next year, we do have some time to really get into a good, solid planning process and further refine this and-
Okay.
...develop what's next.
Okay.
If that's your liking.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Very good. Okay, thanks, and thanks for coming. Thank you. Okay, item 14.
Item number 14, agricultural rate allotment amendment recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending resolution number 07-052, establishing certain city fees, including water and wastewater rates, to establish a procedure for carryover of annual allotment for agricultural customers.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Casey?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. Phil Ferguson, Water Supply Manager, will give the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We're here today for a recommended adjustment to the city's rate resolution for water service. And this is a concern was triggered by the dry year that we just went through, one of the driest years on record, driest in over 100 years. And we, at the Water Commission, we had some comment from our agricultural customers over the past several months, and this is a group of customers, that's about 72 customers out of 25,000, very small part, about- part, about 1% of the total water use. But they do have some special concerns that the council's recognized in the past. And in consultation with the growers and with the Water Commission, we propose that the allotment remain the same, but there'd be a procedure for carrying over allotment from one year to the next. This would be applicable if we have a wet year where they, the growers don't need all of their allotment, they're able to save that up, carry it over into this subsequent year in order to make use of it if that's a dry year. There are some limitations on this. It would only be available when we're not threatened with drought, in other words, when we have Lake Kachuma greater than 100,000 acre-feet of storage. And it would accumulate up to only 200% of the original allotment, the annual allotment. So they would, in any one year, get their 100% allotment at Block 1, plus up to another 100%. So that sort of puts a boundary around it. It is a mechanism that provides a conservation incentive that we think is important, as the Water Commission thinks is important, but it provides some more flexibility for water use by this particular customer class. And therefore, we're recommending that that be included as an amendment to the existing rate resolution. Be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, do you have a question? I have two people who'd like to speak.
I can wait.
Okay. Okay. Steve Little will be followed by Randy Wade. Mr. Little.
Madam Mayor, members of city council, thank you for allowing me to speak. Samuel Clements once said that whiskeys were drinking, but waters were fighting over.
Mm-hmm.
There's no fight today. We fully support the Water Commissioner's responses to this concern of ours for many years. And we thank Fergie for, Bill Ferguson, for getting it on the agenda. And I strongly urge you folks up there to vote yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and Mr. Wade.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Randy Wade. I've had one of your agricultural meters since they are first issued. I'm also proud to say I've never used my yearly allotment. I'm an organic farmer and an agricultural advocate. I farm on a small organic farm in Mission Canyon where I grow mandarins, macadamia nuts, chamoises, and nursery stock. Most of my product is sold at the Saturday farmers' market. The water carryover is very helpful, and I want to thank you for the reduced ag rate. I want to let you know that I will be continuing to farm in the future and be needing water as I have recently planted a half acre of avocado out. Speaking of which, here's my two cents worth on local agriculture. California is losing farmland to development at an alarming rate, and Santa Barbara is no different. Most of my colleagues who provide Santa Barbara with top-quality organic produce unfortunately farm on leased land. As this land is developed, they move on to the next piece of dwindling farmland. Here's a tip: next time you're at the farmers' market, please ask Tom Shepherd, who grows the salad mix you all enjoy, how many farms he's been on in the last 30 years. All development puts pressure on our last few acres of farmland to be developed. The city of Santa Barbara and all of its citizens have a vested interest in this property. These lands are our local food sources. One need to do no more than drive south to see a society based on fossil fuels with no local food sources. This is a very unbalanced society. If developers want to continue to erode our quality of life, they should pay. So today, I propose an ag tax on all future south coast development to be paid into a fund that purchases the last few precious acres in our area. Think about the Bishop Ranch. You know that large parcel on the ride on the way to Costco? How many houses do you want to see there? This prime piece of farmland with water, sunshine, and year-round growing climate could be a very profitable organic farm and training facility for future farmers in Santa Barbara. I hope you would consider some of these ideas to create a more balanced society in Santa Barbara. Here's the benefit of agriculture to the citizens of Santa Barbara: a local food source, open space, view-scapes, wildlife corridors, and foothill fire breaks. Thank you.
Thank you. There's some good ideas there. Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Well, I want to thank Mr. Wade and Mr. Little for coming, and I want to also thank staff for working with the growers and recommending this to us. I think it's sound public policy, as Mr. Wade indicated, to, for us to treat farming a little bit different than we do residential uses and water, simply because of the public policy goal of preserving all the land that we have and continuing to have local farming survive. Though I wish we had more to say over the Bishop Ranch. I fought a couple elections, bloody ones, out there over the Bishop Ranch before myself. And it's tragic to see a lot of these places developed. I think that, sort of to address specifically what people might be concerned with is just the thought that we're heading into a drought and why we should be allowing a carryover when we do that. It's important to indicate that, to reiterate what Bill said, that this carryover only applies when we have less than 100,000 acre-feet in Kachuma. So that is when we essentially have a pretty safe buffer and can afford to have some of that water be used for our agricultural uses. For the two proposals that Mr. Wade talked about, one is something that we actually are going to look at in our impact fee study, essentially. I've advocated before that we have no systematic way to acquire open space and that part of our impact fees should be to create the nexus between open space and future development, and that future development should help pay for the purchase of open space. I also think that you've seen across the state many places that are now requiring new, all-new developments to hook up to recycled water and to pay into additional generation of recycled water. And I think that's very much, that's sound public policy and something that we should talk about doing at some point, at least talk about at what scale we require that to take place. Because the more developments that hook up to recycled water, the more safe our overall water supplies would be. And I think in general, if we're not asking people to hook up to recycled water, we are putting the burden for possible water supply issues to be put on current users when it should be put on future users because they are entering the system. So I support the carryover. It's good to talk about some bigger-picture issues while this is in front of us.
Okay, Mr. Barnwell, and then Ms. Falcone.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I also supported, I have a pretty thick file on my desk that I'm now going to be able to get rid of, that had to do with Mr. Little. If you may recall, he came and spoke, I think rather fervently, and his logic was on his side when we were setting these water rates about a year or more ago, maybe it was two years ago. I appreciate his determination, and I'm glad we've got to a solution that's going to work. I also, Mr. Wade is somewhat of a modest man, so I'm going to shatter his modesty here. You may not know this, but he is the original founder of the farmers' market in the city of Santa Barbara. We are in the presence of greatness.
Good for you.
I want to say it was 1978, was that about, I think it was somewhere around 1978. On his own, went out and started that sucker, struggled, got it going, got it going, finally got everybody together, and then it took on this sheen of expertise and excellence. And about when that happened, Randy decided to get out of it because it got too fancy for him. But he still does all the vegetables. We owe him a great debt of gratitude as the founder of that. I also want to kind of echo Mr. Williams' remarks in water in general. I believe I'm correct, Ms. Bjork, that we're going to have a water report here in the next, I don't know, couple, three meetings of the council?
Yes, that's correct. We're scheduled for mid-December.
Yeah, and I think at that, I hope at that time, we're going to look at all of our various sources of water. And I know Mr. Williams is keen on, because he sits on the comb board and a few other ones, the water in Lake Kachuma, I sit on the Central Coast Water Authority, and so my expertise is the water coming from up north. But all of those distribution systems and sources are fragile. And in times of stress, they can evaporate. Again, another pun intended. So I look forward to these larger discussions of water happening at that time because I think the whole city is, we hear it all the time, you know, what about our water? But I'm glad we got this solution, and I thank you, Mr. Little and Mr. Wade, for all your good work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Falcone.
Thank you. Well, I sit on the Water Commission, so, you know, we're all spread out here. And this came, actually, Mr. Little, you used to be a Water Commissioner for many, many years. And when this came up, there was a lot of discussion at the Water Commission about this issue. And some of the farmers came, Mr. Wade and Mr. Little in particular, but there were several others. And they were very, very passionate about doing something to tweak the system and that, you know, the water that they use, although it's less expensive than our water in our residences, we pay about $2.65 for the first lot that we use. And the agriculture folks spend $1.51. So there is quite a difference in that. But we were raising the rates on the farmers. Now, there are only 72 of them inside the city limits, and that represents about 1% according to the staff report of our total usage. So historically, we have always recognized the value of the urban farmer and want to keep you surviving. And so there was a great deal of sensitivity and a great deal of discussion at the Water Commission over this. And this was the, this was the solution that was, that everybody sort of came to after a long discussion, that in the wet years, if they can be allowed to carry it over what they haven't used, then that's sort of a form of conservation. But then they would get a larger allotment next time, and they're allowed to bank it, but only up to a certain point. I mean, you can't go beyond, you can't just keep banking infinitum. You have a ceiling. So it came up as a good compromise, and I'm really glad to see you gentlemen here. And I really appreciate, you know, all your conversation in the room and working with staff and with the commissioners. And I'm fully in support. I watched the process happen. It was a good one. Thank you very much, and I'm glad we got to this.
Okay, Mr. Williams, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to first, I'm going to make a motion to move the carryover.
Second.
I also just want to say that it's, I'm a little bit sad that Mr. Little isn't on the Water Commission anymore, and I'm hopeful that someone else with deep ties to agriculture does apply sometime in the future or pitch back. Or there's a vacancy right now if someone wants to get on. But I think, I think there may be some applicants right now, but I think it should be not something that we neglect in the long run is ensuring that ag continues to have a voice in our water policy.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Little. Thanks, Mr. Wade. Okay, item number 15, please.
Item number 15, Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant Contract with Corolla Engineers.
Okay. Mr. Casey is heading it toward Mr. Ferguson, I guess. Maybe Ms. Bjork.
Yes. Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you. We want to update you today on an important part of our city water supply, give you some information about where we are, and recommend action to keep us moving toward this project, keep it on track to get it finished. This is the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant. And today, we'll want to first of all highlight today's recommendation to you, a contract with Corolla Engineers. We want to discuss the importance of groundwater as a part of our water supply, give some details about the plant itself, talk about what kind of work we've done so far to investigate replacement of that plant, reconstruction of it, discuss the preliminary project description that has come out of that work so far, highlight some supplemental pilot testing that's included in today's recommendation, and give you an update on the schedule and cost data for the project. So that's overview of what we're planning to do today. The contract recommended today is $291,000 with Corolla Engineers. They've worked with us ongoing on this project, supported us well. They have expertise, and they put together the team necessary to move us forward on reconstructing this plant. The scope of that contract includes additional pilot testing to follow up on work that was done in the prior phase, and that includes both setup and operation of that pilot testing. They are going to investigate some new technology options that have come out recently that may be applicable to this project. They'll assist in the SEQA technical support, and they'll also conduct a permitting analysis. The purpose of that is to verify that this plant can be built in that location in compliance with all applicable regulations. We think that's an important part of the work at this point. The goal, then, is to confirm a final treatment scheme for the plant and to move forward with SEQA review so that the project can move on into final design. Couple of points we want to make about the importance of groundwater. We want to talk about peaking capacity. We want to talk about groundwater as a backup water supply and also as an emergency water supply in the event of catastrophic water supply interruptions. First of all, on peaking capacity, this is a graph of our monthly water demand for the city. The point we want to make here is that the summer demand is almost twice what it is in the winter. That puts extra demand in our system. It makes it difficult at times to meet the demand because of that higher peak load on our system. And groundwater is one source that we use to meet that extra demand, to make sure that we're within the tolerances of our system. Secondly, as a matter of drought backup, this gets us back to the whole issue of how we model our water supply. So we want to take a few minutes just to go through this and highlight how groundwater fits into this segment of our water supply model. The first thing you may be wondering is why we see dates ranging from 1944 to 1953 there. Those are the record dates from history where we've seen the worst drought available in our data. So the point is, that's our critical period, that's the period of time that we model our water supply around. What we've done with this chart is to impose our current water supplies on the historical critical period. And that's important because that tells us how our water supply really performs. If it performs in the critical period, then we know that it's adequate to meet our needs as a water supply. So each stacking bar there, column, represents a year, and you see it ranges from 1944 to 1953. The critical period is actually 1947 to 1951. As we begin this sample period, you can see that most of the colors are the blue and the green. Let me just highlight what those colors mean briefly so that you can see the various components of our supply. At the bottom, we have a baseload, which is our recycled water system. That's the purple. The next color up is a dark blue that represents our Kachuma project deliveries. Then we have the light blue, which is the Gibraltar Mission Tunnel contributions. Actually, that's a good suggestion, and I think I'll use this pointer here so that everybody on TV can see it, too. So we've got recycled water, Kachuma, the Gibraltar Mission Tunnel. Then we have staywater deliveries, which is the green. The yellow is groundwater pumping. And as we get further into the critical drought, assuming full demand under our long-term water supply program, we activate the D-SAL plant, that's the orange. And under the plan, we have an acceptable shortage of 10%, that's the red. So the point of this slide is to show that during fairly normal and wetter periods, we're using mostly surface water and some staywater deliveries to meet that maximum demand. As we move into a dry period, we begin to see curtailments in the surface water. We see Gibraltar dropping off. We see Kachuma deliveries beginning to be cut back, according to the ramp that you've heard us discuss before, where we cut back as the supply drops below 100,000 acre-feet. And in place of that, we're taking as much state water as we can and filling in the difference with groundwater. So we want to make sure that the importance of groundwater is noted here as we consider this facility and the reconstruction of it. I should just point out that at the end of this critical period, our modeling assumes the D-SAL plant continues to run. The purpose of that is to more quickly recharge the groundwater basin so that they become available to us again. So that's what you see in the last two years there.
Madam Mayor, if I may just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Would you put that slide back up? In our current situation right now, where would we be on that chart?
We actually have a chart that shows that a little later on that we'll cover. And I think it might be better to look at that in the current context, but it would be somewhere in this range. But we'll show you more detail of that in just a minute.
Mr. Ferguson, Madam Mayor, if we're in a statewide drought, which often our droughts are statewide droughts, does our state water project water maintain that level, or don't we get a reduced allocation?
We do. We expect to get less than full entitlement, and that reflects less than full entitlement. And actually, in our current modeling, we expect even less.
Okay.
And we'll show you that in the follow-up slide that I made.
Okay. And then, in this, as we lose the light blue, which is the Gibraltar, what we're actually going to do is run out, right? Because if, let's just say this year right here, we were to have a couple of more years like this year right here, Gibraltar dries up, right?
Actually- Actually, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Barnwell, that reflects Gibraltar dry, and the little bit that you see there is from Mission Tunnel.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. You mean just the drippage into the tunnel from the mountainside? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the third point we want to make about the importance of groundwater is that in the event of catastrophic interruptions, groundwater is going to be an important source for us.
So I've got one more on you before you leave.
Sorry, this is Mr. Williams, yeah.
Because, and I'll just, Bill's heard this one from him before, so it's not going to be anything new. The years, I guess the years six and seven there, to me and our planning, those ones should not be orange at the top. Those should be red, and our D-SAL should be only used in the catastrophic event of that either seventh or eighth year. I think the acceptable shortage of conservation that Santa Barbaraans can do is better than the price tag and sustainability and energy increases of D-SAL. So, you know, we don't have to fight about it right now, but it just, I think that's something that we need to address from a policy standpoint in this body at some point, because I don't know if this modeling is completely within the values that we are enunciating as a council. So that's just one other thing, and I guess we probably need to update it with what we think we'd really get from state water, as Brian was talking.
Actually, and this is a model that's just about 20 years old now, and very soon you will have a chance to look at this. We'll be working through a process of updating the long-term supply plan. And certainly, at that point in time, we'd want to ask the question, are there conservation opportunities available that can avoid that cost? And that would be the right question to ask.
Great.
So there is potential for catastrophes that will affect water supply, earthquakes, contamination in the reservoir, either naturally occurring or some sort of sabotage possibly, tunnel collapses, separate from earthquakes. All of those things can interrupt our water supply. On the left, we show current supply at full capacity from all sources. In the middle, that's representing what happens if we lose Mission Tunnel or Gibraltar for some reason. About 25% of our supply is gone. The third one there is if we lose Tekalote Tunnel or the Kachuma Supply. That also affects our state water. It's almost a half of our supply. If you put both of those last two together, you can see that the only immediate water supply available for drinking is groundwater. And so that's one important point to remember about why we focus so much on groundwater. This is an illustration of our groundwater system. It's composed of two aquifers that we actually pump from currently. There is a third one over here that's not very big, not very good quality water, and so we're not planning to use it right now. It is available if we need it in the future. We have the Foothill Basin out here in the outer State Street area, three wells out there, and we have what we call storage unit number one in the downtown area. We have six wells there. And the circled area represents the four wells that are plumbed into the site on Garden and Ortega Street that is the Ortega Treatment Plant. Those wells are City Hall, Veracruz Park, the Corporation Yard, and Ortega Park. And the dot there represents the location of the groundwater treatment plant. This is a picture of the treatment plant. It is an existing facility, has been a treatment plant there since the 1970s. A capacity of almost 4 million gallons per day, and that's about 30% of city's demand. It is no longer able to treat groundwater to the point that makes it suitable for drinking. We've been working over the past several years to design the reconstruction of that, and we'll talk to you a little bit more about that in just a minute. This is an aerial view of the site. The yellow boundary represents the proposed site plan there, and it is adjacent to this property that is now currently under development, is the Mental Health Association office and residential project, three and four-story building there. This location here is the proposed Community Arts Center, the former recycling center location. And this is the existing, you see the existing buildings of the existing treatment plant. Water quality challenges there mostly are naturally occurring. We have high levels of hydrogen sulfide in many of the wells. There's iron and manganese problems, some, a little bit of radon is in the water naturally occurring. Also, there's been contamination of groundwater in the area from PCE, dry cleaning solvent. That's under cleanup now, under an order from the Regional Board, but it is something that we have to deal with and make sure that our process can handle. And we always are faced with the prospect of increasingly stringent water quality standards, so all of that points to a new treatment facility to handle those issues. Work we've done to date, in 2003, we completed an investigation of the status of the wells and a look at the various options that would handle those contaminants that we mentioned in this prior slide. That resulted in a report in 2003 that recommended pilot testing of certain techniques in order to see how the process would work. We did a very brief pilot flow feasibility analysis in 2004 to confirm that the low-level flow, which would be a cheaper pilot study, was adequate. It turned out that that was, and we moved into pilot testing and preliminary design that was completed in 2006. So there is a preliminary project description as a part of that design report. It essentially calls for demolishing the existing treatment plant and constructing a new one, and rehabilitate and/or reconstruct wells as needed in order to supply water to the plant. This is a sort of simplified schematic diagram of the process. We take water in from wells at this end. The blue lines represent the water flow. It goes through a stripping tower, air blower pushes air through that, strips hydrogen sulfide out of that. The air continues onto a scrubber. That air is scrubbed, and the clean air is out. Sulfur byproducts are taken off to landfill or possibly reused, depending on the type of technology that we're able to put into effect here. After coming out of the stripper, the water is injected with soda here and chlorine prior to filtration, goes through the pressure filters, it's collected and stored and ready for pumping out into the distribution system. That's a quite simplified look at it, but that's the basic process that we're looking at this facility based on the preliminary design report. And this is the preliminary site layout, a little bit more detail about how it interacts with the Community Arts Workshop that's planned. We spent some good deal amount of time working this site through with the architect developing the Community Arts Workshop. And the heavy line here shows sort of the boundary between the two uses. It's a little bit ambiguous, because this is actually a shared space in here, and that was an efficiency that Paul Poiret worked out with us as part of the joint discussions that we had. It allows joint use of this drive-through area for the treatment plant and also a drive-through for the Community Arts Workshop. For the treatment plant, the drive space would be through here and through an access being provided by the Mental Health Association property. For the Community Arts Workshop, it would be a drive-through this way in order to allow large trucks to come in for delivery of sets and other equipment. I mentioned supplemental pilot testing. As a result of the first round of pilot testing, there were some unanswered questions that came up. We want to look at alternate media in the filter to improve taste and odor. We want to look at a scrubber option that can help us reduce the size of the scrubber. Right now, it's looking to be about 45 feet high. That's pretty high for that area, pretty high for any area, and we hope to reduce that significantly if the new scrubber technique will work. And we also are going to test some adjustments to air-water ratios. And the bench scale is a test of a new technology that I mentioned earlier. It may be possible that membranes will work better to reduce some of the noise and height issues associated with the plant. So our project schedule is to move forward to complete the pilot testing by February next year, CEQA permitting by the following year. We go into final design there by September of 2009, and the goal is to complete the project by June of 2011. And that's important because it fits in with the drought schedule that Councilmember House referred to earlier. This is the schedule that we've shown you in the past, probably a couple months ago. This shows that we would continue on the type of water supply use that we illustrate in a generic sense in the prior slide. This is our last year combination here of water supply sources. This year, we are taking, expecting to take a little more state water and pump a little bit more groundwater, and we expect maybe we'll be taking less Kachuma water. As we move into 2009, the trend continues. The green hatch is probably some additional purchases through the state water project in addition to some reduced entitlement there. And we get into 2010, we're starting to see a little bit of shortage there and further reduction of Kachuma water using some carryover. That's this blue hatched area here. That's Kachuma Project carryover that we've been able to save from prior years. And in the 2011 year, we have about a 6% shortage here. Groundwater's increased to the point where it's more than we can produce from our wells that don't depend on the groundwater treatment plant at Ortega. So that's when the treatment plant's going to be important to have online. Finally, we want to just update you on cost issues for the project. We've spent about $1 million so far on the various investigations and preliminary design, operating the pilot study, preparing reports and documenting the results of those studies. As we move into the CEQA permitting and the supplemental pilot test, this number here, $825,000, part of that number is what we're recommending today, to allow Corolla Engineers to continue with that work and keep us going, to keep us on schedule. Then we move into final design. These two numbers here, the 825 and the 1,500,000, are currently budgeted in capital program. The construction cost, $8.5 million, that's projected out in the 2010, 2011 years. We expect to be bonding or borrowing money, a loan program on that, in conjunction with improvements at the Keter Treatment Plant. And that's included in our financial plan, in the rate planning. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions and move forward.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Falcone.
Thank you very much. Could you go back to the timeline? And I know that the mental health building is going to be finished well before you get started with this project. But tell me, how does this timeline fit in with the revised Community Arts Center building and facility?
My understanding is that they're very close to final design on the Community Arts Workshop. I believe it's going to be turned in for permit review before the end of this year, and I think that means they're looking to begin construction sometime March, April, something like this. Or after Solstice. Okay. That might make sense.
So they'll get through Solstice '08, and then they'll start the construction on the revised? And you're not even close. Okay. All right. I'm just, because there's a certain amount of staging for each, that is, it's a compacted space.
Oh, yes.
And so I'm just concerned about overlap, I guess.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falcone, I think as Mr. Ferguson showed though in the presentation, we've been coordinating with both those projects very carefully to make sure that they can accommodate what we know is coming down with the reconstruction of this treatment site. And so that's why you see access has been designed in coordination with the Mental Health Project and kind of the sharing of space with the Community Arts Workshop, but with clear delineation of what goes where in that regards. And so good planning and coordination has gone in. But you're right, construction's going to be on different tracks.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's good, that it's on different tracks. I just want to say that over the years, that I've been watching these presentations through some dry years, some wet years and so forth, I've always been very, very comfortable with the way you make the projections. I think that you keep us very safe, you keep us very well supplied. We have three, at least three, with a possibility of a fourth water source. I do agree with DOS that the D-SAL plant should only be used in the last of all possible circumstances, but I don't think anybody's in a real hurry to go buy the new membranes for many multiple millions of dollars to put that back online, and it doesn't give you the greatest water anyway. It's very, very expensive. But it's there. And so to build it in as a last resort, I think, is a responsible thing. But we do have three different sources of water available to us. So I know that everybody's been getting, myself included, a lot of emails saying, well, what about the drought? What about the drought? What about the drought? And I can't emphasize enough that we're not in a drought. We've had a dry year, and we're making drought projections. Can you put that last slide or the, not the last, where was? There it is. Is that it? No. Yes. Yeah. Out to 2011, that's a what-if. That's not a, it's happening. It's a what-if we continue to go along the road that we had last year. Now hopefully, that won't happen, and hopefully, it will continue to rain. It's just sort of begun to rain. We've had a couple of little ones, but, you know, I just am concerned that people not get the idea that suddenly, we're going to be in this precipitous drop, that Kachuma's okay, Gibraltar's still okay, the groundwater is full. The ground basins are full. And if I'm wrong, please correct me.
No, that's correct.
Okay. And there is state water, and I'm as skeptical as an expert as to whether or not that's actually real water or whether or not it's just paper water. But, you know, it is there, and we really don't draw on it the way we could. So there's a lot of cushion, and I just really want people to continue to conserve. Everybody's great at conserving and using the equipment and so forth that uses less water, energy efficiency, but we don't have a problem right this minute. And that's why we need to fix that plant so that we can continue to draw from the ground when we need to do that. So thank you very much. I appreciate all your work.
Ms. Shire?
We might just emphasize a couple of points there, two things. First of all, because of our multiple sources and because we have a multi-year supply at Kachuma, we're not facing the same sort of situations that others in other parts of the state, other parts of the country are facing. Also, we should highlight that this is based on some fairly low projections. This assumes not continued like last year every year. That would be unreasonable to expect the driest year in a century every year. But it does reflect the driest year in our modeling period, the driest four-year period. It assumes average or less rainfall, therefore essentially zero runoff into Kachuma, very low deliveries from Gibraltar. So it is a very conservative estimate at our water supply. And finally, one of the reasons why we're able to meet this level of supply is because people have been using water more efficiently, and we continue to request that they do that.
Ms. Shire?
Thank you. Someone's cell phone's going off.
If somebody's got a cellphone, they might want to turn it off. Sounds like cellphone leakage.
The difference in the total amount of water in the 2007, 2008 columns, is that just based on asking people to conserve? Or why is there a reduction in overall, in your modeling here, in the overall water consumption?
That's a good question. 2007 reflects the extraordinarily dry year. Our consumption was actually up. People are, to some extent, paying attention to us.
Because they're watering their lawns more because the rain didn't have...
We say water when it's dry, and they have been watering. We expect that the average demand out into the near future is about 14,000 acre feet. And the first year you see there is a little more than that, is up almost 15,000. And that's history at this point, from the second year onward is our projection.
Okay. And what is the rationale behind the recycled water line staying pretty constant as opposed to trying to increase that over time?
Well, that's actually a remnant of our long-term modeling that was done in the program. We'll probably see some growth there. We've seen a little growth. In fact, I think this year's going to be a record year on our recycled water usage, not by a lot, but by some. And we are looking for more opportunities, and we keep reminding people that that's a condition of the development proposals if they're near the recycled water line.
Yeah, I think that's an important piece.
I think in reality, we expect to see that grow.
Good. And then finally, the price tag, the $8.5 million, how real is that number compared to how construction may go up or what, over in the next four or five years before actually construction starts, or three or four years at this point?
Well, it's based on the preliminary design. We won't have a final, engineers estimate the cost until we have the final design completed. But there are contingencies in that number to account for cost increases and to account for other uncertainties that develop during the design process and also the time that lasts.
I would think with infrastructure issues throughout the country and the devastation we've just seen in Southern California and the need to rebuild in a lot of areas, that a lot of issues related to construction is going to change in the next several years. So if there's cushion in there and we come in under budget, that's great, but going in the other direction, I think, is always more difficult. So I was just curious how you've got to that number.
That would be our preference, and that's one reason to move as quickly as we can toward getting the project completed.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hor, I'm sorry. Mr. Williams?
Well, I was just going to move A and B, and I did want to say that I do, you know... And I did want to say that I do, you know, people shouldn't be panicked that there's, you know, we're running out of water tomorrow. But I do like people to be a little bit panicked. Because we're always in a precarious water supply situation as a community. And there's a lot more things that people can do. We conserve a lot, but we could conserve a whole lot more. I know my consumption went down a lot after Councilmember Horton turned me on a front-loading wash machines, which use a lot less water, a lot less energy, and get your clothes drier so that they don't spend as much time in the dryer. And, you know, there's always, you know, I'm mystified still when I walk around town and I see lots and lots of lawns. And those lawns are like water eaters. Because it's not just, it doesn't just all go down in our groundwater basin, that those lawns consume a lot of water in the meantime. So if people want to improve the situation, converting their lawns to other drought-tolerant, especially native landscaping is one way that people can help.
Okay, Mr. Burnwell.
Oh, yeah, there was a motion, move A and B.
That's a long motion.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Williams, I just wanted to follow up on that. And of course, one of the things we didn't touch on here and one of the things we didn't talk about is that we actually consider water conservation as part of our supply.
Sure.
We factor it in as 10% of our supply. So we do expect our public to be actively conserving at all times, which is one of the reasons that we wait until there's a declared drought or a more substantial drought to ask for more conservation, because we're always expecting conservation. And if people are interested in following up on their conservation, we have a water audit service available. That's available by calling 564-5460. We have a number of programs throughout the city to try and help residents conserve water, including rebates for toilets and showerheads and so forth. So that is a very active part of our water supply at all times.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burnwell.
Thank you. The Los Angeles Times had a headline a few months ago that said, "City Council Declares Drought." And I think a lot of people, I mean this sincerely, they read that thinking it was us, City Council. Because it didn't say LA City Council, it just said, "City Council Declares Drought." And that was because they get a lot of their water from the Colorado River, which they now have to give to Arizona, New Mexico and Colorado, so that's been diminished. And they get a lot of their water from the Owens River Valley, which they have to leave that alone. So they're in a whole different problem than we are. And I think every once in a while, it's okay to say that out loud. On the site facilities, where we're going to be doing the new construction, was there any thought given to moving the surveyor's office a little forward and a little left or right and, you know, seeing if we could free up some more land and have more room both for the plant as well as maybe for the Solstice Center?
I think the answer to that question is that anytime you move a use like that, you have to replace it somewhere. And it tends to be more expensive to replace than...
No, I meant move the building. I meant actually, because there's a front yard on that building, which is a little unique for downtown property. And there's a side yard on, if I remember correctly, you have an aerial photograph of it. And I just wondered, because land is, whoa, wait there. This is the, am I doing this right?
Yes.
Yeah, this is the surveyor's building. And there's empty yard or park-a-car-here space. And then there's a front yard there, too. And it's a little unique in downtown where land is valuable to have that kind of thing. And I just, I think the building is on the register of interesting buildings. And so did we give any thought to just picking it up and moving it six or eight feet and over to the corner and getting, freeing up just a couple thousand square feet of real estate?
Actually, we haven't. But if we get in a pinch, that's something we can look at. And at first, I thought your question was relocate the...
No, I just meant move that little building. I find it very charming. And so, and certainly, we're going to save it and all that sort of stuff. But it has, in downtown sense, abilities, it has a way, kind of, underutilized real estate because of the front yard and the side yards there. So I, and I know, we've had discussions over in here about this entrance and exit and whatnot. And I thought, well, maybe there's a little bit of a solution there to free up some land. Because that's $100 square foot land. I'm looking forward to the next discussion of water. And thank you all very much for moving ahead and keeping us protected. I remember the last drought. Man, I remember why we got that D-SAL plant. I know why we got that. And people, we're on the campaign trail, and people were saying, "Oh, yeah, where did you get the D-SAL plant? That was a dumb idea." Well, this should have been here when we were running out of water and we were looking for any kind of source. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, and the other thing was that the people voted for it.
Yeah, right, exactly. We were all scared.
Yeah, yeah. And everybody voted for it. I didn't, but other people did.
I didn't either.
There were two of us there. I think it was several million to two. Okay, Mr. House, and we do have them, we have them all, don't we? Yeah, thank you, Mr. House.
Talk about underutilized land, that parcel next door that's got that great big parking lot in front of it. If ever, at some point, there's an opportunity, I hope the city's got their eye on that. There's a lot of good things that could go there. The, you know, in other places where they rely on their groundwater, the land compacts and goes down. And you end up with clay or some sort of a harder earth. But you can, it's, you know, the idea of drafting from your groundwater is not necessarily, at least worldwide, considered to be an optimal thing. I mean, in my mind, I'd way rather use a D-SAL plant than draft or overdraft our groundwater. And I didn't hear any discussion of how we recharge that. So I'm interested to hear at least those two things. And I've got some other questions as well.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, our groundwater aquifers that we're pulling this particular water out of are several hundred feet deep. So they are protected. There are a couple of layers of groundwater above them that do slowly recharge to that layer, although the way the groundwater works is it's coming in sort of laterally. The groundwater is recharged through the creeks and it percolates on down. There are also opportunities, we don't have them in the wells that will be served by this plant, but it's something that we can explore in the future and are hoping to explore in the future, to do direct recharging of groundwater in times when there's surplus surface water, to use those as opportunities to use the groundwater. Groundwater is increasingly being used as a reservoir for storage, being used much more actively as a reservoir than just as a source of water. So I'm sure that we will continue to move in that direction.
Is there a geologic dam of some sort that would prohibit saltwater incursion into the freshwater aquifer?
The mechanisms for the saltwater incursion are somewhat not understood at this point in time. We aren't exactly sure where the saltwater groundwater interface is. We have USGS monitoring wells all along the waterfront. We watch that very carefully, especially as we begin to use that groundwater basin heavily. So it is something that we've kept a close eye on. In the drought of the 90s, we did not see groundwater infiltration into that basin.
You mean saltwater?
Sorry, excuse me, saltwater, yes.
But that's, is that something that's at all within the scope of the contract to study? Because, I mean, it has been a serious problem elsewhere. I remember in the, in LA area, of course, other places where they really began to be very concerned because they began to see saltwater show up in their freshwater wells.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, it's not part of this contract, but the numbers that you've seen in our planning reflect a safe yield basis, a perennial yield basis. So there isn't overdraft on a long-term basis. We do pull more heavily during dry years, and it'll let it rest during wet years.
Okay.
But the overall usage is within the perennial yield. We also have a USGS groundwater model of the basin that we've used to simulate the intrusion of seawater into that basin. And that helps us determine how much to pump at various locations to avoid seawater intrusion. So that's an important part of our planning because we want to avoid the seawater...
So there's a sort of a firewall, if you will, between, we would stop at a certain point before we would cause that problem for ourselves.
Yeah, it's a gradient in the groundwater aquifer that moves seaward during periods of non-pumping, but moves inward during periods of heavy pumping. And so we want to watch that very carefully.
Okay, thank you. And now, you talked about a 45-foot tower of some sort, and maybe there's an alternative. One of my concerns coming in today was this, I mentioned this before, this particular block, this area of town is going through some kind of transformation with the condos on the other side, with the mental health. I mean, it's getting more beautiful and functional and becoming a neighborhood. And so aesthetics is really, really important. And then the interface from a industrial use adjacent to residential use. And if I were to understand this correctly, the trucks themselves would actually come in from underneath the mental health facility, either exiting or coming in, and bring the chemicals and whatnot or the filters and all that. Am I correct in that understanding of the circulation?
Let me bring up the diagram that we were talking about. For the, both the water treatment plant and the Community Arts Workshop, the entrance would be off of Ortega Street here. For water treatment plant deliveries, they would come through the common area here, through the gate to the treatment plant, unload in this area, and drive out at an at-grade driveway access back to Garden Street here. This is at-grade coming off of Garden Street.
Is that, like, an alleyway between the two buildings or is it underneath the other?
Yeah, it's an actual driveway that's been designed into the Mental Health Project to go into the upper level of parking, which is at-grade. There's another layer below that.
Down below.
For the Community Arts Workshop, we expect in the range of four to six times a month during peak operating time. A lot of time when the plant won't be operating at all, though, too. So on average, it would be less than that.
Okay. And then what about the overall aesthetics? At what point do you really begin to take that into consideration? Because right now, it's, I mean, if it were to continue to look like it does right now, I think that would be really sad. So what's the opportunity for really treating this and making it into a beautiful public facility?
Councilmember House, it is, it will continue to be a well-treatment plant, so it will continue to look like an industrial facility. However, we're very sensitive to the surrounding uses and the residential neighborhood that's developing in that area. And so a lot of the work that we are doing is focused on trying to mitigate the potential effects of having an industrial facility next to residential facilities. So the work, looking at the additional technologies that have become available during this period that we've been developing this plan, are aimed really at trying to address those kinds of issues. We think we have a workable plan at this time. We're now looking to see if we can mitigate any of the potential aesthetic impacts and neighborhood impacts. So we are very aware of that, and we will continue to work on that. But ultimately, it will be an industrial facility, and it's going to have tanks and trucks and that kind of thing.
Yes, it's interesting. You know, the, up at Sheffield, that amazing structure that we kept, well, I mean, it looks like a big public facility, and well, it should. But there was so much equipment that was contained in there. But it wasn't just out for the whole world to see, as this particular one is here. And so I don't know how others feel, but I'm really going to be watching and hopeful that we come up with some sort of a design that it can, it still can look like a public water facility, but at the same time, I mean, to look like an industrial yard, to look like it could be a petroleum plant, or who knows what people want to imagine. I mean, it just isn't, you know, that's a real concern I have.
And we have budgeted for architectural services, and I'm sure that we will do the best we can also with the landscaping. I know that you've been to the Kater Plant and the El Estero Wastewater Treatment Plant, and all those, those are industrial facilities. And in Kater's case, in a residential neighborhood, we work very hard to make them as appealing as possible through the way we construct them and the way that we landscape them.
Okay, well, thank you. And lastly, at some point, I'm hopeful that we, and we've been working with staff on this, but to get the Owani Water Principles for Resource-Efficient Land Use up in front of the City Council. And they begin to address some of these conservation things and acknowledge a lot of what we've already been doing, but even point a little bit further with Purple Pipe and Gray Water and things like that. So maybe we can get that on one of our coming agendas here soon. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item 16 will be our last one before a break.
Item number 16, Contract for Design Services for the Police Department Locker Room Upgrade and Emergency Power and Electrical Assessment.
Okay. Mr. Casey points again. Mr. Schuf, yeah. I was going to say, we just saw this, but it was in Finance Committee. Thank you. I was sitting in, yeah. Okay, Mr. Schuf.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is John Schuf. I'm the Acting Wastewater Manager, but with a different hat today, or my old hat, I should say, today. The purpose of the item before you is to ask for the approval of an administrative transfer of funds from a completed project, a project that has a balance of $149,000, which was the Combined Communication Radio Upgrade Project. And then also appropriate $27,382 from the General Fund Reserves in order that we can enter into an agreement for feasibility, study and design services for the upgrade of the police locker room. The project, the existing locker room is in a converted utility room in the sub-basement of the police station. It's got low-hanging utility ducts and pipes. There's no ventilation. It's not ADA compliant. It's a deteriorated facility. At best, it's, you know, you can call it dilapidated. This is a picture of the main hallway that goes through. And really, this picture does not do justice. It's, the totality of the dilapidation is just not shown here at all, nor is the stagnant air that is there. There's absolutely no ventilation in this facility. Again, low-hanging utilities, pipes and ventilation systems. The lockers are obviously, well, old. There's some problems with the utilities that hang down, obviously needing for people to duck underneath them to get where they want to go or to their locker. Again, that's the height of the showers. And what's kind of interesting about that, there's little curbs on the showers, which are not ADA compliant, which makes you actually raise up when you go into the shower. And this gentleman doesn't have a lot of place to raise up. The design services are really in three phases, broken up into three phases. The first phase is an assessment and a feasibility of the HVAC system and the electrical system. It also includes a cost estimate and really to determine what the scope of the project is. And I'll get into that a little bit later, why we're taking this approach to it. The second element of the design services is a decision point. And based on what we get from the feasibility study, is whether we return to council with a new scope of work or we continue on with the project and go into Phase Two, which will be a final design, coming up with a funding strategy, and maybe construction phasing that would help with our funding strategy. The assessment and the feasibility, there's two elements of that. First, the HVAC system. There, over the years, there's been numerous additions of package units for air conditioning and heating. Those package units have actually pulled down away from the original chiller. So what we're experiencing right now is the chiller freezing up and having to do serious maintenance on it. The chiller's also old, and we can't find parts and very difficult to repair. What we're really concerned about is putting one more unit up there, one more package unit, and shutting the whole system down and thereby making the police facility, rest of the air conditioning, well, have issues. We also want to take a look at, we also want to take a look at the energy efficiency of the entire unit. This is a perfect opportunity to do that and to find places where we can, we can make it a more efficient, energy-wise. The other portion of the assessment is the electrical. The lockers, there is a need for lockers to have electricity in them to charge flashlights, radios, cell phones, tasers, whatever. So what the officers can do is actually plug in their equipment into the locker room and be able to charge those for use in the next day. Excuse me. And then the last element of the electrical assessment is the emergency power. Currently, there is no emergency power to the locker room. And judging by those pictures, I'm sure it's very dark in there when the lights go out no matter what. So I think that's an operative place to put emergency power for the police officers. This is a picture of the package units that have been placed on top of the roof. There's some 12 or 15 of them up top there, serving different areas of the police station. And this is a picture of a not-so-modern electrical facility that we're going to do work on for the police station as part of this project. The cost estimate for the total project is close to $1.6 million, based on the original scope, with a construction cost of about $1.2 million. The portion that we're asking you to fund today and do is the design portion of the contract. That's the $148,000 plus the $14,000 for contingency costs, plus engineering costs, that's in-house staff costs of $13,408. Currently, the project is unfunded. It is not included in our budget this year. So today, we're asking for an administratively, for us to administratively transfer funds from a completed... from a completed project that we came in under cost of $149,000, and then appropriating the $27,382 from the general fund. That's a total of $160, or $76,382, which includes engineering staff charges. The construction funding, we plan on looking at the, the scope. Based on the scope, we also plan on coming up with a funding plan, and maybe phasing the project so that we can do the project in phases to make it a little bit easier on the budget. I put together a very primitive schedule, rough, excuse me, rough, schedule. And what I really wanted to point out was the decision, the decision area in February of '08, after the assessment is done, that decision is what we're going to take a look at when we figure out what the scope is and after we have the feasibility studies. If everything is okay, and we can go ahead with, with the design, we'll go ahead with the design. And based on, you know, everything going well, we should construct in February of '09. But I would imagine that this project would be phased when we, when we complete it. That completes my presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions which might have.
Thanks. Mr. Horton?
I want to move recommendations to Amy and Singh.
Second.
Okay. Anybody else want to say anything, Mr. House? Do you want some? No? Oh, okay.
Just to let people know, we did look at this at Finance and, and asked the question about if we moved the headquarters, what would that mean? And just because of the timing of how long that would even take in terms of a long-term plan of if we ever looked at another police headquarters, we, obviously, to say that the status, current status has issues, I think is the understatement of the year, looking at the photos. So to move forward, we thought at Finance that that was the way to go, and obviously, we'll see back in February to make, you know, to make that final decision. So.
Right. Yeah, the need is definitely not to be debated here. The need is huge. Ms. Falconi?
Yeah, this is long overdue, but at least we're getting to it. I guess my concern is that it's such a terrific mess down there. I know you're doing the best you can, but it's a terrific mess. It's very uncomfortable. It's very difficult to deal with. And phasing it is going to not only prolong that, but it's also going to, I mean, not only do you have a dilapidated situation, but now you have construction to deal with. So how is that going to affect the folks? I see the chief sitting here, and I'm concerned about prolonging the agony here. If this were funded, I guess my question is, and my question to the Finance Committee is, if this were funded, how long would that schedule be?
Mr. Shuf?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falconi, I put up the schedule that is based on complete funding. That schedule is based on complete funding.
That schedule there, ending in January of '09, is that what that says?
July.
July, sorry. July of '09, summer of '09, is a schedule based on a fully-funded project?
Yes.
So what are you talking about?
Well, I'm talking about when we take a look at it, and we're, we're very early in the, in the
I understand.
... design process. So, and that's what I wanted to warn. I would imagine, and based on the budget, based on available funding, one tact that we can take is phasing the project over budgets. Maybe doing, you know, some of the pipe installation, maybe doing the mechanical first and getting some air down there, type of things, you know, first, and then doing the locker room and the, the shower stalls and the restroom facilities. Obviously, it would be much easier and a cleaner project to do it all if we have the money up front. It always is. And it would be a little bit less expensive, too. But we may not have the money up front, and if we don't, then phasing it is always an option we take a look at.
I would ask the Finance Committee to seriously take a look at this and see what we can do here. Thank you. Right. That's right. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Councilmember Committee assignments, and then we've also got, you want to go ahead and read the two, two closed sessions?
Item number 17, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, and item number 18, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, Maritime Museum.
Okay, and we'll, we'll journ out of there. And we need to remind people to vote because next Tuesday, we're going to be closed. We won't have a council meeting, but this, this area right here will be for voting and for counting votes and all that sort of thing. So we're excited about that. I had a couple of things I have to share with you. Last night, I went to Los Angeles and got back very late, so if I'm a little bit slow today, that's why. But I was honored to sit with the President of Mongolia. Who knows that when you run for mayor, you get to do these sort of things. President Mongolia was coming back from the White House, in which he got some money. And, and a friend of mine is trying to build a hospital in Mongolia. So he said, "Come on down." And then I happened to be the highest-ranking elected official there, which happens sometimes when you wander in a place. And so I got to sit with him, and he's a very charming, wonderful man. He's got very high hopes for his schools and for his kids. And they have almost the same literacy rate as we do. It's amazing, because it's, it's full of mountains and very poor people. So good for him. His name is President Inkbyer, and I welcomed him to California, behalf of the governor, and told him to come and visit. That's what they said for me to do, so I just did it. Totally, no, I don't have millions of dollars to give him, but it was a very nice, a very great experience. And then on Saturday night, I was able to meet with the, there was a National Forest Foundation dinner, and I was able to talk with Gail Kimball, who runs the, who is the National Forest Service Chief, a woman, and that was sort of fun. And I thanked her for taking the lead in the zac-a-fire and how well that worked out. So that was nice to be able to convey that over to her. And then I also had dinner with Ruth Coleman, who's the Director of the State Parks Foundation. And she, so there are a lot of women in these sort of roles these days. And she, she is a very funny, very, very nice woman. And Mr. Horton was with me on that one. Good speaker, yeah. So I don't know if anybody else has something? Mr. Horton, and then Ms. Falconi?
Many of us attended the People Self-Help Housing Stuff the Bus event, which is a way of generating funds for Christmas gifts and things for the needy children in our community. And that was actually sponsored by the Dolly Restaurant, Malkin Honey, 30 West Avenue. They did a very nice job. And the Franklin Neighborhood Watch Committee had a meeting, which Councilmember Williams and I attended, and we learned a lot of their concerns for their neighborhood, and hopefully, we'll be able to do something about that.
That's great. Ms. Falconi?
Well, just briefly, there was a forum that was cosponsored, put together by the Santa Barbara Industrial Association, together with CEC, the Community Environmental Council, which is a great pairing. I just love that pairing. And not only did the county, but the City of Santa Barbara also helped to sponsor and underwrite that, that summit. And it was all about energy and alternative energy. And we had, there were speakers that talked about oil, about wind, about solar, and about natural gas. And so it was very, it was very informative. And not everybody agreed with everything everybody had to say, but it was a very, I think it was a very interesting, it was an interesting morning. And I was, I think the city should be glad they were part of it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. House?
You know, we didn't do this for a few weeks.
I know.
And it's like, I'm not going to do that, go over all, but there are a couple of things. I did, I wanted to call attention to something that was
We're a busy council, so I appreciate that.
I know. A couple of weeks ago, the, this thing about stomping out bullying was in the paper. And I just wanted to acknowledge Dr. Sarvis and the, and the school districts for taking that on.
Right.
And we thought, we're really concerned about violence in our community with youth, and we're focused on the gangs. And of course, every time something like this, that happens, we just cringe and, and try to do better. But in this case, we're looking at the early phases of violence in, in their schools. And I just, I just want to acknowledge them and appreciate them. And I've had the chance to shake his hand and thank him, but I want the public to, to hear that as well. I just think that's important, and I'm glad that they took it on. I also want to report that the, and I think I shared this with you all, but I want the public to know, we've taken our on-track show on the road for the commuter rail. And we've, it's been very interesting. We, we went from our meeting here, where we all unanimously approved that, and met with MTD, had really a warm reception there, went to Ventura County Transportation Commission, and they fully endorsed the plan and offered their support. And then we went before the Galita City Council, and unanimously, they supported it. And Councilmembers Wallace and Bennett have been now assigned to work with us. And we just made a presentation, two presentations, to the Chamber of Commerce here, the Government Review Committee, and the Executive Committee, and received enthusiastic and unanimous support from both of those committees, and they've endorsed the plan. We have more to go, other jurisdictions to go see, but I just want you to know that it's, it really is a, oh, and TCC just recently received the plan, and they also spoke well of it. So I think we're, we're on track. I just, I'd stop with that. We're on track. We're moving forward on that, and I thought you should know. Thank you.
Very good. The Measure D Committee for the South Coast, too, is, is very interested in funding for trains. So we'll see how that comes out. We're almost ready to have our plan voted on, so that'll be exciting. I think it's next week. Mr. Williams, and then Ms. Schneider.
Well, I had the pleasure of representing the, the city on Sunday at the ADL Dinner, and presenting to Lenny Faiblant, Phil Levian, who's a teacher at San Marcos High School, and Mark Childs, who's the canter at Temple Bene Brith. You know, awards to do with, first of all, their sort of promotion of tolerance, the values of tolerance and inclusion. And it was a pleasure getting to represent the city at that. And I don't want to go through three weeks' worth of events either, but I thought that was something that was significant to all of you.
Right. And I want to thank you for doing that for me. Thanks. Ms. Schneider?
Thanks. Well, I'd like to commend our airport department and the fire department.
Oh, that's right.
This morning was a drill, an emergency drill, that occurs once every three years required by the FAA. And it was quite an event. There was an MTD bus that was personified, it was supposed to be a fuselage that, it was like a regional jet that was supposed to crash. And there were volunteers from City College, which had different colored tags, depending if you were anything from just wounded to dead. And you had the big, those big fluorescent yellow trucks come out from the, from our own fire station at the airport. The county fire came aboard, the EMT, the Harbor Patrol, our own police department. The, I saw an ambulance from UCSB and fired trucks from UCSB. So a great way to coordinate efforts from different jurisdictions. Councilmember Roger Acevis from City of Galita was there, and the mayor and I was there, and they're, I'm sure, debriefing and assessing everything that went through, that went, everything they went through this morning. But it was a great spectacle to, to watch. We had to delay it a little bit because the FedEx was on time and landed and had to unload their plane. And so then we got started. But, and there was this one, one student who was really taking her role very seriously. She, her role was to be hysterical, and she was, you know, screaming. And you had the, you had on the, the, one of the loudspeakers saying, "Would the woman with the red hair, please come towards the hangar," you know, and you're hearing her, and she's disagreeing.
She's running around screaming.
But it, it looked very lifelike. So hopefully, we'll never, ever, ever have to see the real thing. But to have a drill was really impressive to see.
Well, and it was good we had the police there, because they know how to calm people down. So they calmed her down, which was a relief to everybody. Mr. Burnwell?
In addition to all those things that everybody else said, the Arts Alive program looks like it may come to an end. Laura Ince, I think, has been doing a lot of great things. But she had a graffiti art program.
Yeah.
And, and it was, it was well-attended, and it was attended by those, those kids that are kind of looking for something else to do, you know? And they did really good art. It's, it's one of those programs where you want to take them from that venue right there, and then move them into the next one, which is really get them going on the art. But I wanted to thank Laura and everything that she has done to make, to make some of these kids find their, their destiny in art. She's done a really good job, and we're going to miss her when Arts Alive closes down. But that was a really good program that she had. Thanks.
It was. And they're talking now about hiring an arts coordinator through the Santa Barbara Education Foundation for all the schools, and to pull in all the arts groups into the schools, which will be, I think, wonderful. So that part, that part's good. Okay, we're going to go
Madam Mayor?
Close session, yes, Ms. Falconi.
I just, I wanted to mention just one thing. As you said, next week, we will not be having a council meeting because of the election. And the City Clerk's office has really done a wonderful job putting the election together. Now is the key time. But I did want to mention that we have already started processing the absentee ballots, and we're doing it here in Room 15. And it's open to the public, so the public can come in and observe the teams that we have. It's always in teams of two to observe that process. And then when we do the ballot counting in the council chambers next week, that will also be a public process. The public can come in and observe the process. I think it's the first time, you know, I've ever heard of the process being totally open. We will have the computer right here. People will be able to see the ballots being fed into the system. We will have the canvassing board here, and people will be able to observe that. We will also be televising it on Channel 18.
That'll be good.
So that the public can observe this process. It'll be very transparent. And it's been a tremendous amount of planning. We've had great cooperation from Joe Holland and the county elections folks, and everything's on track. We're really pleased with how it's gone so far.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you very much.
I understand that we are going to be open on Friday to accept ballots. There was some misunderstanding about that, I think, in the press, and it's
It's always been our intention to be open to accept ballots on Friday. In fact, we'll also be open part of the day on Saturday.
Oh, okay. And we've been open before, I mean, we're open at 7:30 in the morning to 5:30 in the afternoon, so that's pretty cool. Ms. Falconi?
I just have a quick question. When you say that you're processing the absentee ballots, does that mean you're opening them and feeding them into, you're not counting them?
No, they're not counting them.
You're just processing?
But what they do is they go through them, and they, they basically organize them so they can then be put in the ballot machine, which is exactly what the county does. This is not anything that's unusual.
No, no, no. But when you say processing, some people may think or misinterpret that it's counting the actual
No, they won't, they won't be counted until next Tuesday, but they put them in blocks.
Just to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.